Okay. Items for individual discussion, this is a study session to help us work on fleshing out the goals that we were, we previously set. And then the first one on the agenda is the Ad hoc Committee for Workforce Development. And I think one of the things we discussed at the last study session on housing is the, one of the obstacles we have here locally is a gap or a lack of artisans and tradesmen. And we, general consensus was to keep that in mind when we look at workforce developments. Is Councilmember Wish like to make a comment on this or start us off? Councilmember Brown?
Thank you. So what I suggested originally was to form a committee representative of our community to hear some of the barriers that residents identify as far as entering the workforce. One of the issues that Ms. Joyce Spicer brought up at our last goal session, we were talking about, oh, we're talking, I can't remember what we're talking about, but she, she brought up a good point about not having the data for the dropout rates of our high school students who reside here in Albion. So that's one of the things I think we would probably look, look at as far as getting people involved with trades, taking up trades and stuff, but I really think it's important for us to hear from community members when it comes to the obstacles and barriers that exist for workforce development.
Okay. Did you have specific areas that you wanted to target as far as professions or skills? To make sure we get the right mix on the, on the committee?
No, I hadn't, not right off the top of my head, I don't right now.
Okay. Councilmember Reed?
I, I, I think something like skills in carpentry, welding, what's, what do you call it, when you have to replace appliances, things like that. A lot of that is needed now, especially with, with seniors who have homes where they've been there a long time and things are beginning to not so well.
Okay. So I think all of the, the trades that are involved in construction because we're, it would marry up nicely with trying to get housing, construction started here, and that being one of the challenges is not having a workforce trained to do that. That seems like a natural thing to look at. The welding, I mean, there are numerous job announcements and employment opportunities if you're a qualified welder. That sounds like a very good idea. And all the, the trades, if we're gonna talk about rental certification later and probably out of that with the inspections, there's gonna be a variety of things that are gonna need to be addressed, electricians and whatnot. Councilmember Reed?
A couple of, of businesses, people with trucks that say construction, things that they do. I had, had been talking to someone about if there could be a way that you could have classes for people who wanted to learn how to do construction, for who wanted to learn how to fix things in homes and, but work along with these people who are actually doing it with homes that they're repairing and, and, and getting back on the market. That would be a really good program. A hands-on.
Well, I think one of the areas that we could turn to is to make sure we have representation on the workforce development committee would be local contractors, and people that are in the trades. And I think probably would be helpful to get representative from the opportunity of high school. So those are two ideas that I'd throw out for consideration. And solicit other inputs, Councilmember Clark?
Maybe someone from the college, because I know right now, I don't think Cal, Community College offers any skilled trade at that facility. You can take it through the school, but I don't necessarily know if it's offered in our facility here in town.
Councilmember Brown?
Thank you. As far as your question, Councilmember Clark, I'm not sure if it's offered here, but I know that the classes that are offered here are based on the demand and need for. So if there was definitely like a need or demand for a certain type of class, I, I think that's the way they set up out here at the Eastern Academic Center. I also wanted to throw out an area, aspiring business owners. I know, you know, when we talk about workforce development, I know people, some people have ideas and are interested in ownership. And I know one of the obstacles that the EDC has identified has been credit repair, credit screen, stuff like that. But I think that's an area that we want to include in here, people who are maybe small business owners and are aspiring to grow or are in early development stages and just don't know how to get going.
Any other input, Councilmember Reed?
In Battle Creek, I went over to a, a home, the land bank had, as it's called, and they, they've got a program called Transform This Home. And it's older homes that need work done on them before they can be sold or rented or whatever they, before they can be sold because that's what they do. And they were showing, well, you got a chance to walk through it and see what it looks like now. They had already done some work on it, like windows and, and getting the basement all done up and everything. But they're using people to work on those homes that they're training to do things. So that, that really seems like a good program.
Any other inputs? Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, I just wanted to suggest having, excuse me, representation from Michigan Works.
Is there a council member that would like to take the lead on this? Thank you. Much appreciated. Okay. We can probably get the EDC to put together a list of local contractors, businesses and whatnot. I know that Ms. Vivian Davis is a, she's affiliated or associated with Cal, yeah, Calog Community College. Okay. Any other comments, inputs? Okay, let's talk about rental certification then. So I know that we have, it's not attached in this agenda, but most of us have, all of us should have the agenda for the regular meeting and attached in that packet which was included was some information on rental certification. And it, my reading on it, it's sort of a outline of, I think it's in the next package, isn't it? Or is it this one? Oh, okay, all right, I'm, I'm mistaken then, sorry. So it is in this package then. Okay. Councilmember Clark?
So I noticed that a lot of the, when it was talking about the certifications, it was that re-inspected may be as needed. So how would we, or how would that qualify if something was as needed, only by a complaint? Or how would that work?
Mr. Tracy?
Chairman Tracy, Director of Building Code, Code Enforcement and Planning. Basically, excuse me, I don't, do you want me to go down through the steps that I outlined or just?
I think that'd be helpful.
Okay. In the past year, year and a half, we've had various meetings and whether we should have it or not have it, and that's totally up to council. But trying to come up with something that is not going to cost somebody a lot of money right off the bat, give some timelines and not become a burden to taxpayers having to pay for it out of their pockets. Basically, what I've drafted here in front of you is to start in 2020 with registration for the year. At this time, just as, as previous, we've never really had a total handle on how many rentals there are in the city. We still run across some properties that have been rentals or have been, been, become rentals or one-family homes that, you know, have three or four rentals in it that we are not aware of and we run across. So the first year would be registration. The fee, suggested fee to start out with would be $25 per unit. That could be higher or lower depending on how it would work out cost-wise with supporting the, the system, which at $25, you're basically 48 cents a week or $2.08 per month. During that time, and estimating that there's between 600 and 700 rentals during that time, do half of the rentals, or not half of those, determine how many rentals we actually have and also have at least four training classes and, and sessions with landlords in the city where both can express what needs to be done, the, the city on its part and what would be covered under this, and also taking into consideration and, and suggestions from landlords. So one every quarter. During this time too, we would be able to establish addresses that we don't have for rentals and we have buildings that have the primary address on it and do not have rental unit numbers on them, which is needed and required also for public safety and responding. So the first year out, there again, give us some time to work with the landlords, have study sessions and training and, and figure out what we really have out there. And that would be 2020. 2021, on, on your draft there suggests that we go with half to, half of the rentals the first year. There again, at that point would probably, or it's being suggested that it'd be outsourced for the simple fact, we're not sure how many, how many rentals we would have and how much the cost would actually be. Be farther, much less expensive to the city to have outsourced where it's not costing the city any money at all. If we were to hire in-house, you can be guaranteed that we probably have anywhere from 20,000 to upwards of 60,000 in public costs on top of that. So that's my suggestion as to the first year of rental inspections to have it outsourced. And then the second half in 2022, go through the second half of the rentals. And as we go through those, finishing up in 2022, you'd have a good idea of where you're at, how many rentals you have, what costs are, and if you wanted to go with in-house inspectors at that time, so be it, but at least you'd have, have an idea what costs are. Also in this, and this would be up to council, in some, some cities they have where if a rental passes inspection or has a few minor items and are abated within a, within a timeline, that possibly you may look at having to have it re-inspected for two or three years, unless there would be circumstances where you have a complaint and you find that there are violations that have either came up or have been created. So, so if you did have a complaint by a tenant, we would still follow up on those. Okay, so. Basically, still looking at the property maintenance code at the minimums required, which is referenced and adopted, referenced by the state, adopted by the city and has been adopted by the city since 2003, other than just being updated as the state code changes and is referenced. There again, that's the bare minimum. Evaluation, of course, during this time, once again, make adjustments to the program as needed and same with any costs and such. And a few of the things that would not be included in this would be the zoning, which is still separate, solid waste, which would be separate out of this, noxious vegetation, snow and ice removal from public sidewalks that are abutting or adjacent to properties, abandoned vehicles and parking violations, those would not be part of this rental certification, those will still be, stand by themselves in their ordinances, so. So that kind of gives you a little bit of an idea of what I believe would work probably easier than going full throttle and especially right now when we are extremely tied up with a number of different projects and things. We have quite a bit going on that, actually more going on now than I've seen in 21 years. And we are definitely short-staffed.
Councilmember Clark?
So if, so if, if it was during the certification time and if a unit, according to how we look at it, if a unit, if Lynn was making a complaint about one of my units, but she is delinquent on the rent, do we have any kind of statute in place about follow-up for that?
That would, that would be up to council if you want to go that route.
Okay.
And of course, the city attorney.
Okay.
Okay. I mean, we've talked about previously on the ordinance I wrote over two years ago now, I did have some verbiage in there protecting the landlords to where the tenants, if they're making false accusations or they wind up paying for inspections and such. But at this point, that's, okay?
Other comments or questions by council? Have a couple. The, one of, one of the concerns or one of the questions that was raised, and I understand the staffing and the cost if we hire somebody. But one of the concerns was if it's, my math is pretty poor, but say there are 600 units. And that's, I don't know what the inspections cost. Okay, so $80 per inspection.
It's $66.
Okay. I think last time I got inspected, it was, it was 80 bucks, but.
That's, that's, that's for, that is for current, that's not on, rental certification is cheaper.
Okay, so roughly 60, 55?
Sixty-six, sixty-six, yeah.
So I don't know what that comes out to with 600 rental units, but.
Well, I've got some figures here.
Okay, just wondering how much, because that was a concern that was raised, how much money we're gonna take out of the, of the local economy and send someplace else?
Well, this is, this is the thing about it, if we're outsourcing, sourcing, we're not taking anything out of our pocket, the city's pocket. Okay. And that $66, for example, right, or it would actually be 58 right now, but it'd be our cost. I figure 66 to help cover some of the paperwork and that. So figuring it at, even, even if we were at $75, for example, figuring it higher. So that's, and the first 350, I say you have 700. So the first year would be 26,250 for inspections. If you hired in-house for just a inspection individual for, under ICC inspection, such a single individual with benefits, you are looking at $47,000, $47,064. Minus the 26,250, that's an additional, or what would be cost charged to the public if you hired in-house would be an additional 20,000. If we have it, if we have it jobbed out, it's not costing the public, period.
With, the concern that was raised was that money's coming from somewhere, many of the people that are landlords are also residents of Albion. So it's taking money from taxpayers in Albion.
Wow.
Because, because they pay taxes.
It's taken from the, it's taken from the commercial business, just as any other business.
Okay, but, but taken from local Albion businesses, people or whatever, and transitioning it to a Coldwater, I think is where they're based out of. Okay?
Well, this particular firm we have right now is, is Athens.
Okay, okay.
But, but the bottom line is it's not affecting the rest of the taxpayers that are not making money off of it.
I understand that, I was just wondering how much it was.
Now, if you were to hire someone that said had, say they had a spouse and family, you're looking more at 60,000, almost 61,000 cost in-house. And recoup, you would have over 34,000 that you'd have to recoup being paid out by taxpayers by not outsourcing it. Outsourcing it, you're not affecting the rest of the taxpayers. And that's at $16 an hour. If you go for a full-time inspection, you're looking at Act 54 certified from 60,000 to 90,000 plus, plus your insurances and such.
Okay. What, do you know what the average wait time is to get a permit issued on just a repair, say replacing a water heater or?
Typically, if people have their, have their paperwork, which we have a lot of, that's not filled out completely, usually within two days.
Okay. And I think the biggest holdup apparent, appears to be being able to find somebody to actually do the work.
That's, and that is across the whole state. Good example, I just had a company in, excuse me, that's thinking about adding on to one of our existing businesses. And they ask how long the zoning is good for? I says, for a year. And I says, how long are you looking at having to wait? And they said, it depends on who, you know, can get the contractor in to build.
Right.
Because they're from the Detroit area and they're, they're waiting out there five and six months. So, and it's, you know, it's, it's harder to find, whether it's building or trades, to do any work right now. So good field for people to get into.
Okay. Other councilmembers have questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. Tracy. Public comments versus wish to address the city council, please state your name and address. You have three minutes and everybody be very respectful of the speaker. So if you wish to make a public comment, please come forward.
Terry Atkins, 1-807-227-MAR. I'm here again to object to this rental certification. I, I have been through it and I know what is, what's involved in it. What I would like to do, I mean, right now it seems to be that you're more reasonable than what you was last year, what the, at least in the timelines. I would like to have somebody from the council look into how many serious violations the code department broke last year. Furnaces, electrical, that kind of thing. If there's 10 or 15, we had a meeting with John and he threw out 35 calls, but I'm talking serious. How many serious violations did they write? Is it, how many injuries, was there any injuries? I mean, you're talking about putting a whole new layer of bureaucracy on the landlords. And if you've only got 25 or 15 or 25 serious violations, it just don't seem feasible to me. I mean, that it's, that you spend all this time and effort on something that could be taken care of with what they have already. I do like the fact that you are at least moving towards the 2020, you know, giving us a little time. Most of the decent landlords don't have a problem with the inspection part. It's the unknowns. What are you going to do? You're, if you're taking a 1950's house like upon Miller Drive that, are you, are we gonna have to bring it up to the days code? We're gonna have to rewire all of that stuff? That kind of thing, that's the unknowns. Because if it costs 20,000 or 15,000 dollars to rewire the whole house and have to, you know, cut the drywall out and do all the rewire and, and do all that back up, the houses are not gonna be worth another extra, you know, on top of that. It just seems to me like that you're putting a whole lot of effort into something that could be taken care of with a little bit of more effort. You know, if, if you need to know who is a landlord, register, that's fine, that, that's not a big expense. It's the unknowns that's, that we're, if, if they could even come up with a checklist, a written checklist, say, we're gonna come in and we're gonna look at this, this, this and this, the way Section 8 does when they come in, they have a checklist, say, well, this is what we're gonna do. If you can have this, say, for the, the code that we're wanting to hold you to, this is what you have to have ahead, you gotta have it right. And that would give us time to do that before the inspections come. I mean, at least the, me and, and a bunch of the other guys that are, that are doing it all the time. We don't mind doing it, but we just don't want the surprise. You know, you, you owe $10,000, I mean, you, you gotta put $10,000 into it and it's gotta be done next month. Because I've been waiting a year for one electrician to come and put new circuits in, something that I could have done myself, I probably will end up doing it myself in, you know, a couple hours. Anyway, I'm just still objecting.
Thank you. Mr. Tracy?
If the council decides to go forward with this, we definitely would wind up with a checklist. That's one of the reasons we said we have at least four meetings during the year to go over everything with everybody, everybody too. But if that's, if the council decides to go with it, then we will wind up going with a checklist. If, if you're not, then there's no use of going through all the time of coming up with something you're not gonna use, so.
Are there other public comments this evening?
Hi, everybody, Jim Stewart, 205 West Oak, in, I almost said Jackson, in Albion. I'll be brief, I, I've been here before and I also, I just, I don't have a problem with rental certification either. In general, the folks that I work with and our POA will be fine and everything will be fine. I, I just think there's unintended consequences that, this is, this is an old, like the other gentleman was saying, that we're, we're, we're solving something that we can solve with a lot less effort and a lot less expense with a really big answer. And that's all, that's. And that's all, that's my objection, is we're going to spend a lot of energy and we're going to have some unintended consequences. We're going to lose some lower-end rentals because the prices are going to go up. And we are going to get hopefully some enforcement and so that we'll lose some lower-end rentals too. So we have a housing problem now and that's, it's going to get worse before it gets better, especially on the low end. And that's, I don't have the, all the answers to it, I just don't think this solves that. So I'd like to see us enforce what we already have and do some education and there's a number of us that are willing to help with that. So if, if you go forward, then we'll be fine and our rents will go up a little bit, but that's, that's the consequence for, for putting in this program and along with a whole bunch more hours for our inspection department. Whether the money stays in Albion or goes somewhere else, it'll, it'll work, but the enforcement is the key. But the enforcement right now is also the key, so.
Thank you. Are there other public comments this evening? Councilmember comments? If not, we'll, may I have a motion? Councilmember Clark?
I agree that we should have a checklist. When I did inspections in Battle Creek, I did have a checklist. And to put an ease on this rental certification, a lot of it is the basic things that most landlords are already taking care of. It's, if you're a good landlord, those things are done. You know, it's, it's putting a plug in a socket and making sure it's wired correctly. You know, it's a light that shows you that. It's simply making sure smoke detectors are up. You know, it, it wasn't as detailed as, as you're thinking for the certification. So other than that, I totally agree with that because I wouldn't want, I have a landlord, I was landlord myself and I wouldn't want to get hit hard all of a sudden with the expensive that I didn't expect either. I like the idea how you have it broke down, it's doing it gradually, because that wouldn't cause a large, a large expense. And for some of the other ones that have not kept their properties where they should be, then maybe they'll come available or they'll fix them, I don't know. But we, you know, there's two sides of it. You want to be, make sure that landlords that don't do that are held accountable because nobody would want to put your son or daughter in a place where the landlord is coddling and not doing things correctly. Because most people don't buy rental insurance, let's just face it, and then they lose everything that they own because of that.
Any other comments from council? And I would echo your sentiments and discussion on having a checklist. And it sounds like we should reach out to Battle Creek and see what they have for their checklist and look at the, the Section 8, the federally approved checklist. I know you have some concerns with that.
A concern I have with, with. A concern I have with that is for one, the state code references the International Property Maintenance Code. And that is the bare minimums of what's required by the state. And we've adopted that and had that in place since 2003. If you go with a Section 8 being less, if something happens, I think you're opening yourself to liability quite, it could be, like, wind up being quite costly to the city and those that are enforcing. So, because the bottom line is, property maintenance, you're looking at potable water, sewer's working, you have hot water, you have smoke detectors, your window's open, you can get out a window if it's an emergency, you have fresh air during the summertime with screens where the windows can open, you have handrails on stair, stairways, your furnace is vented properly so you don't have carbon monoxide, which we've had cases over the years quite frequently, to be honest with you, several years back until all the people doing work, not saying that everybody did shoddy work, but we had our people who did shoddy work on mechanical. And we did have people that were tired all the time and thought they had the flu and wound up going to hospital and found out that they had carbon monoxide poisoning. Electrical, checking for ground faults and that covers are on. You have an electrical box that is at least at minimum what it should be and things of that nature. So it's not like you're going in and saying you're going to have to go through and totally bring it up to the current code because bottom line is, you also have the existing rehabilitation code that we go by too, that's in along with that. So of course, if you do over a certain percentage of work, if you're, if you're redoing on an apartment that, you can wind up having to have hard, hardwired smoke detectors put in. But currently, if it's still 1950's, you've got battery operated smoke detectors. So it's not a big do-over and it's not intended to be that. We're not looking at telling people who, what color they can have siding or you have to replace all your siding because you have a couple cracks in it. That's not the intent. So, and I, and I totally understand, there are cities that have extreme, very extreme codes. Any city or township can always add more to, to what the, than what the state requires. They're not supposed to go less than what the state requires. And that's the reason I suggest staying with the property maintenance code.
So City Attorney Hartness. You, would you offer any opinion whether or not the city would have a liability if we use the federal standard, Section 8, for example, as opposed to the international property code would? I'm questioning or I'm not, I'm not convinced that we would have legal liability if we choose to use a federally approved standard, whereas we're not required to do this, but we're looking at doing this. And haven't asked you this before, so you may need to go look at something, but if you have an opinion.
I think whatever standard we put in place, as long as it doesn't conflict with any obligation imposed on us by state law or federal law, we're not going to, as long as we're not running a follow-up either, I think we can impose whatever standard that the council deems appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so may I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm a second.
All those in favor of adjourning say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We are adjourned until 7:00 PM for the regular council session.